I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's mast, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous spires, for the ramparts we watched were so gallant we screamed. And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in half, grew through the night, and our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free, o'er the home of the brave?
Beautiful.
Well, it's an honor for me to be here again with all of you, and I love the Costa Mesa singing group tonight. I've got a special heart for them. Father, we just thank you this evening for our time together and also the business and matters that present themselves before us this evening. I pray, Lord, for special blessing upon the mayor, the entire council, our city attorney, city manager, entire city staff, Lord, that work day by day, week by week. We pray for the police department, the entire staff, all the municipalities, Lord, the fire department, the water department, everything, Lord, that keeps our city running. We pray, Father, for your continued providence and protection, and again, wisdom upon our talk tonight and decisions made in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.
All right. Thank you so much, students. Enjoy the next few weeks before the break. Okay, city clerk, will you please call the roll?
Let the record reflect that all council is present except council members Mansour and Guinness.
Okay, city attorney, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was direction given, but no reportable action was taken in closed session.
All right. Now I'm excited to invite our Assemblywoman Cadi Petri-Norris up, and she is here with a special presentation to the council and to the entire city of Costa Mesa. Assemblywoman Petri-Norris, it's all yours.
Good evening, and thank you so much for inviting me to join you today. I am Assemblywoman Cadi Petri-Norris. It is an honor to represent this district and this city in the California State Assembly, and it really is a privilege to work with Mayor Foley, with the council, with the city manager, Lori Ann Farrell-Harrison. You are incredible partners, and I look forward to working together as we move forward. I'm here tonight with some exciting news about a really exciting project that's underway here in Costa Mesa. As you all know, Lyons Park has been part of this community since 1940, before the city of Costa Mesa was even incorporated. And almost 80 years later, we are celebrating the next exciting chapter in the history of Lyons Park. Decades in the making, you opened in May a beautiful library, which is an incredible facility that's a jewel in the heart of this city. And I want to thank Mayor Foley and council for your vision and leadership in making that happen. Earlier this year, Mayor Foley and the council reached out to me to get my office and the state of California engaged in the Lyons Park project. And I'm really excited to be here with you tonight to announce that as part of the 2019 and 2020 budget, we worked together and we were able to secure $1 million in funding for the children's playground at Lyons Park. This is a playground, and it's also an investment. It's an investment in our children, it's an investment in the restoration of the west side of Costa Mesa, and it is an investment in the vibrant city of Costa Mesa. So thank you for allowing me to partner with you on this. I am very excited to be part of this exciting new chapter for Lyons Park and for Costa Mesa.
Thank you so much. And what I am going to ask is the council will come down and we can have the oversized check presented to us.
All right, sounds good.
But first, I just want to thank you for doing such a good job for us here in our district in bringing back our donors. Many people may not know, but Orange County has historically been a donor county. That means we pay a lot of money in taxes that we send to Sacramento and none of it ever comes back, but now it's coming back. Thank you, thanks to our new Assemblywoman. So thank you so much. All right, no better. Okay, Cadi. All right. Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you. All right. 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 Okay. Now, our next presentation is actually really important as well. This is a presentation on the 2020 census, and we have Deana Duela from the U.S. Census Bureau here. Ms. Duela.
Great. This is... Okay. Good afternoon, actually. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak to you all about the census. I'm sure you've all heard about the census coming up, whether in the news or through a community organization, and we're just really excited and thankful for the opportunity to give you some more information, so I'll try to be mindful of your time and go through this as quickly as possible in case there are any questions. So, at the bureau, we do have a motto. It's to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. And everyone means everyone. Okay, so why do we do a census? Well, it's in the Constitution. It's mandated by the Constitution right up front. Article 1, Section 2 requires that we have a count of everyone living in our country every 10 years. Whiles some other really great reasons. One that goes very well, a great segue from Assemblywoman Norris's presentation, the money, right? So the funds, distribution of federal funds. It's about $675 billion a year, and that number is locked in for the next 10 years. So we want to make sure that our communities are getting their fair share of the pie. So we need to have everyone counted for that reason, so that we get the funds that we need for our communities here. So that's one. Another is apportionment. The U.S. House of Representatives is apportioned based on the data from the census. So of course, that's another thing. We want to make sure we have the right number of representatives here. We don't want to lose any representatives, and that's even at the more local level here with some areas that are done by trustee, water boards, things like that are all use census data and are dependent on census data. So we really, really want to make sure we have a correct and accurate count. And of course, I like to say it's the basis of our democracy. It's everyone's right to be counted, to be seen and heard, and we want to make sure that happens. This is just a quick timeline overview of our operations. We did start address canvassing in August, where we just had folks who were verifying addresses that couldn't be verified through Google Maps or aerial imaging. And starting early next year, we're going to start our update leave operation, which is not too critical in Orange County, but we do have some rural areas, like Silverado, of course, that we'll be doing that operation for. And then the service-based enumeration and group quarters, those are folks who are receiving services will be counted in a different way. Folks living in, let's say, college dorms, which we have a lot of here in this area, right, will be counted in a certain way. Folks in nursing homes, people that are incarcerated, military, they're all counted through our group quarters operation. And our self-response time period is going to come up in mid-March, and that's where we'll invite you to self-respond either online or by phone. So we really encourage folks to do that, starting middle of March next year. And then our census day will be April 1st, April fools, but no one should be a fool. Everyone should respond to the census questionnaire because it's very, very vital, of course, to our community. And somewhere around that date, if you haven't responded online, they will send you a paper form to your home. And we will start following up with folks April and May and all the way through July of 2020 next year. This is just another, I know it might be hard for folks to see up there, but a little overview of what we're going to send you in the mail. We're going to send a postcard telling you where you can self-respond online. If we still don't hear from you, you'll probably get another postcard. And then you'll eventually get the paper questionnaire for people that want to do it that way and don't want to call in or do it online. Then you'll get one more reminder before we actually come to your house. So the best way to avoid the nuisance and the annoyance of someone knocking on your door is to just, when you get that postcard, just fill it out online and get it out of the way. Because if you don't, we will come and bother you. This part is very important. We want to make sure that folks in the community know, and of course, you are leaders in the community, and definitely we need your help to get this message across, that the census is confidential and everyone's answers are protected by law, Title 13 of the U.S. Code. The results are actually only reported statistically, so no personal information is ever shared. We don't share information with any other government agency. That means not ICE, not Homeland, not even the president. Nobody gets our information. So we have information coming to us, perhaps, from other agencies, but no information comes out. It's like a vault. All employees are required to take an oath and are sworn to an oath for life to protect respondents' information, and there are strict and heavy penalties and fines associated with any kind of breach, five years in prison, $250,000 fine. So again, we take this very, very seriously. Ever since this was codified in 1954, there has never been a breach, and we don't anticipate there ever will be. We are supporting many languages. As you know, Costa Mesa and Orange County is home to many, many languages spoken here, maybe, I think, over 79, I heard recently, 79 languages. We do have 12 languages on the official census that many are, of course, all of these are spoken in Orange County. And then we'll have an additional 59 that will be supported by language glossary cards, some print and video guides. And I should say that the actual paper form will only be in English, and English-Spanish bilingual. But if you go online, we have Spanish, Chinese, Vietnamese, Korean, Russian, Arabic, Tagalog, Polish, French, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Japanese. And also at our call centers, if you were to call in, you can talk to a live person. So that will hopefully make it easier for folks with limited English proficiency to be able to fill out the form pretty easily. We are hiring for tons of jobs. You may have seen some of our flyers or as at your church or your school or any events. That is because we need to hire lots and lots of folks for the effort. It's the largest mobilization, they say, outside of a war effort, because we need to hire thousands of people just here in Orange County. And those are the folks that are, of course, are going to be following up, knocking on your door if you didn't respond to the form. So please help us share this with anyone you know. You just have to be 18 or over to apply and pass a background check, and the pay rate's pretty good, around $21 for field jobs, and then maybe around $15 for office jobs. Going to go quickly through this. The Complete Count Committee is a committee that is collaborative in nature and hopes to really promote outreach efforts for the 2020 census. And the city of Costa Mesa is actually kicking off their Complete Count Committee, and I invite all of you to attend. It's on Friday, this Friday, at 10:00 a.m. at the Donald Dugan Library. And you know I was going to get that wrong. If you know folks, especially folks that are leaders in the community, whether they're at your, you know, school or your church or any, you know, at the PTA, please let them know to get involved with some sort of census outreach, because we really want to make sure we have a complete count. For Costa Mesa, that's money that we're losing if we don't have a complete count, and that's representation that we're losing too, right? So we definitely want to make sure everyone is counted, and I can skip over that because we'll talk about it more at the CCC on Friday. And I hope that it's a great collaborative effort for folks that are participating and helping to get the word out about the 2020 census. Again, I'll just go over this briefly. Right now, we're in the education and awareness phase, and we're going to be moving into motivating folks early next year. And then we'll remind folks between May and July of next year, so it's an ongoing effort. And we'll be thanking all of our partners, including the city of Costa Mesa, starting in July. This is a nice tool to check out on our website, census.gov/rome. It's a tool that you can pull up to see some demographic information about your area. This one here just has part of neighboring Santa Ana, but you'll find that if you were to put in any address or zip code in Costa Mesa, you will find a very similar low response score, and that means that, for example, this part of Santa Ana had a 31% low response score. That means 31% of people did not respond to the census in 2020, and that's a lot of people. That's 31% of funds we missed out on, 31% of representation, and so on. So we really want to make sure that we don't have that this time around. We want to make sure we get our fair share of the pie. So next steps, we need your help to get our community ready for the 2020 census. Make sure everyone understands that the census is safe, it's easy, it's confidential, and of course, it's vital for our community. Also, we need help to tell folks about our jobs, because we need to hire lots of people. And lastly, if you could please invite us, the census team here in Orange County, to any of your events or meetings, we'd be happy to be there to connect with folks in the community. This is my contact information, and please feel free to jot it down and get in touch with me if I can ever be of assistance to you. And I don't know if there's time for questions, but if there is, I'm happy to answer any.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. We actually have our kickoff meeting with our Complete Count Committee on Friday, and then we have a plan for having a lot of public meetings and having a lot of outreach, because we want to get as many people as possible involved. So thanks so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is another presentation, and this is our presentation by City Manager Ms. Farrell-Harrison on the award that we recently received for the Helen Putnam Award for Excellence for our Awesome Smart Camp program.
Thank you, Mayor Foley. Good evening, everyone. Tonight I have a special presentation that I'd like to make to our Parks and Community Services staff, and also to members of the district that are here with us this evening, the Newport Mesa School District. So each year, the League of California Cities selects just a handful of cities to give its coveted Helen Putnam Award to. It's a very competitive process. A lot of cities participate. There are over 400 cities in California, and many of them will put in and compete for this coveted Helen Putnam Award. So I'm proud to announce this evening that the city of Costa Mesa was awarded the coveted Helen Putnam Award for its city's Smart Camp program. I was able to have the privilege in October to actually receive the award on the city's behalf, but I wanted to make sure that we acknowledged the city staff and also the staff from the Newport Mesa Unified School District for this incredible collaborative. And just a little bit on our Smart Camp, it stands for Sports, Music, and Arts, and it wouldn't be possible with the support of our city council and the partnership that we have with the Newport Mesa Unified School District. And it's a great example of how cities and school districts can work together to do great things. We created the camp in 2014, and it's a high-quality camp that offers sports, music, and art to local youth during the summer months, including those in underserved communities. And we're proud to announce that since its inception, the Smart Camp has touched the lives of thousands of youth and provided the opportunity to enrich their lives. And this year alone, the Smart Camp served approximately 490 participants. So that's very impressive. And so again, I had the honor and the privilege of accepting the award on the city's behalf, but I know that this work was done by our incredibly talented staff, and so I wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge the staff that participated in the Smart Camp, that are actually doing the work every day during the summer to enrich the lives of so many of our youth here in the city, and to offer the opportunity to the Newport Mesa Unified School District team that also participated with us. And so at this point, I'd just like to present the award to Ashley Thomas, our Recreation Supervisor, and Tracy Habiger, the Recreation Coordinator. And also, if the members from the school district could join us, Denise Barameister, we have Scott Fitzpatrick, and Lynn Wickes. And then we can have a photo op with the mayor and the city council.
kids can take theater and music and learn how to play soccer, baseball, swim.
So thank you, Ashley, and Tracy, and Scott, Lynn, and Denise.
I think there's a cheer program, and they do that all because the city is helping to
On behalf of the California League of Cities, just wanted to present to you the 2019 Helen
fund the coaches and the teachers that provide those programs during the summer.
Putnam Award for Excellence for Smart Camp.
And it's a really, really great program. I know a lot of families really enjoy it. So thank you so much for all your help in allowing us to host this program.
Okay. Next item of business is the Costa Mesa Minute.
I'm Dane Bora, and this is your special city council edition of the Costa Mesa Minute. Here's a quick look at some upcoming Costa Mesa events and activities you may be interested in. The drama students at Costa Mesa Middle School invite you to their production of Elf Jr., the musical, on campus and onstage in the Performing Arts Center this weekend only. Cyclocross brings its unique format of just-for-fun and/or competitive cycling to Valerik Park this Sunday. This kid, dog, and family-friendly event has something for riders of all skill levels. Another community blood drive is scheduled for Monday, November 25th, in Lyons Park, and giving the gift of blood is a great idea during the season of giving. The annual Polar Express event hosted by L3 Real Estate returns to Estancia Park on Saturday, December 7th. There will be plenty of free activities, including train rides, pictures with Santa, face painting, cookie decorating, and more. And the following weekend, there is snow in the forecast at Valerik Park when Holiday Snowland, hosted by Turelli Real Estate, returns with 40 tons of snow and other family-friendly activities at this free community event. Everybody's favorite Costa Mesa holiday tradition returns to the front lawn of City Hall December 13th through the 22nd with all of your Snoopy House favorites like free photos with Santa, free cider, free train rides, and more. And speaking of the holiday favorites, the Parks and Community Services Department is hosting Movie Night in the Park, featuring the holiday classic Elf, on Friday, December 13th, on the event lawn at Lyons Park. You are invited to help restore native plants in Fairview Park at the once-monthly Fairview Park Restoration Event on Saturday, December 14th. The next community bike ride, hosted by Councilmember Arlis Reynolds, takes place on Sunday, December 15th. Join your neighbors to deliver cookies by bike to Costa Mesa police officers and firefighters. Santa Claus is coming to the Costa Mesa Senior Center to spread some holiday cheer on Thursday, December 19th, at this always fun and always well-attended annual event. And that's just some of what's coming up here in Costa Mesa. For more information, check out the regular edition of the Costa Mesa Minute.
Thank you. There's so many fun, exciting things happening. Okay, as the holidays and then the tree, did you say the tree lighting ceremony? I don't think I saw that. So the tree lighting ceremony is on Thursday night over at the Westin in the South Coast Plaza area, so if you want to come out, that's always a fun event every year. Public comments at this time, anyone wishing to speak to the council on an item not on the agenda, please come to one of the two podiums. And what I think I want to do for the model engineers, if you could, maybe I'll have the public comments go first, and then we'll do the model engineers at the end. How's that? Does that work? You can just sit right there. Okay? Ms. Martin?
I have spoken to city council several times over the years about a publication that is available for free in the lobby of the city hall called The Epoch Times. I have read articles to you from one of these podiums, and when I was here last week for a Bike Way and Walkability Committee meeting, I again found a stack of Epoch Times in our lobby. In my estimation, after having read it cover to cover, so to speak, it is highly political, it is highly slanted, and I don't believe, I know, it doesn't belong in a public building such as the city hall. And so I'm respectfully requesting that you be movers and shakers in getting this Epoch Times out of our lobby available to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So shout out again to Cadi Petri-Norris, again, for, thank you for all the work she's doing, helping our city. Also, she is a tremendous asset in our fight against out-of-control
And what I think I want to do for the model engineers, if you could, maybe I'll have the public comments go first, and then we'll do the model engineers at the end. How's that? Does that work? You can just sit right there, okay? Ms. Martin?
I have spoken to city council several times over the years about a publication that is available for free in the lobby of the City Hall called The Epoch Times. I have read articles to you from one of these podiums. And when I was here last week for a Bike Way and Walkability Committee meeting, I again found a stack of Epoch Times in our lobby. In my estimation, after having read it cover to cover, so to speak, it is highly political, it is highly slanted, and I don't believe, I know it doesn't belong in a public building such as the City Hall. And so I'm respectfully requesting that you be movers and shakers in getting this Epoch Times out of our lobby available to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So shout out again to Cotty Petri Norris, again, for, thank you for all the work she's doing, helping our city. Also, she is a tremendous asset in our fight against the out-of-control, sober-living situation in our city. And I hope for any of you who don't get the Orange County Register, in this Sunday's paper on the front page was an article about the Rehab Riviera. And I happen to know that Cotty Petri Norris is full-tilt boogie on this up in Sacramento, partnering with Katrina Foley, our mayor. And I'd just like to read this one thing. The woman who did Jared's Law, the mother who, her son died, she told me the most horrible thing, that some of the worst operators actually know that some of their clients have died in the house, but they don't want the paramedics to come and, you know, notice that the person might have been passed away for a while. So they knowingly give CPR on clients that they already know are dead, so that they get transported to the hospital. I find that so offensive. She is the person that pushed for this law, and I also know that Cotty Petri Norris helped her with this law. So I want to read this real quick. So she's the mother that, her name is, I'm sorry, her name is McIntyre. Okay, so she quotes saying, "They think they just, they're just addicts doing what they do, but the difference between life and death is someone taking action." Here's the quote. "Costa Mesa Mayor Foley intends to do just that. City officials have been meeting with the Orange County District Attorney's Office, hoping to step up law enforcement's response to illegal activity inside these rehabs." I also want to applaud DA Spitzer, because he's full-tilt boogie on this, and he does not take campaign contributions from sober living houses like Mr. Rikakis did. "We have a new DA, and he seems to be more willing to operate in this space and go after the bad actors, so the good actors can actually do the work of helping people," said Foley, recalling that she recently saw a client from her neighborhood detox house vomit violently in the curb. "It's a process," she said. "I'm as impatient as anyone." I applaud you, Mayor Foley. I applaud Cotty Petri Norris. I know Harley Root is working at this federal level. Something's got to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Hold up. Are you going to be part of the presentation? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Hank Castignetti. I'm here tonight representing the Orange County Model Engineers, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city councilors, and residents of Costa Mesa. I'd like to invite the entire city to OCME's Santa Train on December 21st and 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. at beautiful Fairview Park. Take a free train ride out to the North Pole and visit with the big guy himself. Sit on Santa's lap from 10 to 3:00, and have your picture taken by the club photographer for a small donation, or simply take your own picture in front of the train background. So come on out and make holiday memories right here in Costa Mesa, folks. Ride trains at Goat Hill Junction during the day, take a nature walk through Fairview Park, then visit Snoopy House when the sun goes down. After that, take the family out to dinner, to one of our many fine local restaurants, or pick out a Costa Mesa Christmas tree, and help make this city stay Costa amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Wendy Leese, and I know that you are considering changing the tax rate for the marijuana industries up in the North End. And I would just like to voice a caution. It's a new market, it's a new industry, and it's changing all the time. Yes, we did have projections of income, of resources, to come into the city, and we did count that, but I don't think that we should be hasty in adjusting the tax rate as it's been proposed by the industry owners and a property owner up in the North End, where that we've got the, you know, the area that we voted to be for not the, for the manufacturing and the research and the development of marijuana. I just think it sets a bad precedent that, oh, well, we didn't get what we wanted, so we're going to lower the tax. I think we need to wait it out and let the people who are making the products, as with any new business, look at the competition and see how they can make a better product that's better able to compete in the market. And, and, okay, maybe they're not going to make as much money, but they'll have a better product. I don't think that, I think it's, it's setting a bad precedent. It kind of enables them to come back if we do it for a short period of time, where like, say, six months, and they say, well, it didn't work out. The other thing is, how does anybody, it's like with the sober-living industry. How do we really know if they're taking cash in and what their P&amp;L really is? I mean, we don't know that. And I was looking on the warrants, I think it's a good idea, I always look on the warrants, but we're paying $136,314, and it's a good thing, because we're finally in the process of abating the Ohio House and the SoCal Recovery, and that's a good thing, to be that far along the line. But, you know, for years, we didn't do anything to help, we just let that industry run amok on our city. And so that was a bad way to do it, and I don't think that we should do, enable the marijuana industry to, to take advantage of the fact that we set a goal of X number of dollars, and then we should decrease the tax. Anyway, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Good evening. Tonight's dog park commentary is entitled Water Bowls. When the small dog park was created in 2001, long before my time, Costa Mesa staff appears to have invented a better mousetrap, completely different from the conventional approaches taken in nearly all other dog parks in the county. Here's a photo of it. "We have a freestanding self-watering bowl sitting on a deep bed of gravel, a sort of French drain system. If the water is foul, the dog owner simply lifts the bowl, spills the fouled water on the pea gravel, and the water seeps down without problems. When the water level gets low, a float inside the bowl triggers a release of fresh water." Very simple. "The only maintenance problem in this arrangement has, it has a useful life of only seven to 10 years. When accumulated dirt, silt, leaves, clippings begin to clog things up. After seven years or so back in 2008, the system began to fail, as you can see..." Back? Oh, there we go. Okay. "At the time, staff insisted in replacing," you see how messy it got there. "Staff insisted on replacing the pea gravel with concrete and installing a conventional fixed-water bowl arrangement. The Costa Mesa Bark Park Foundation chose to defy staff and fix the problem themselves. A private party paid for and arranged for delivery of the new set of pea gravel, and a local troop of Eagle Scouts took care of the physical work involved, all at no expense to the taxpayers or the foundation for that matter. I personally, as a volunteer, took over responsibility of this arrangement by physically monitoring that water bowl area, replacing the stainless steel bowls every 15 months or so. My personal out-of-pocket expense totaled less than $220 over six years. When staff took over the dog park from the foundation, the first thing they did was reverse it." This photo illustrates, I got to get this right, there we go. You got a bowl there that you can't, the only way you can stick your hand in there is to clean it up, and it's disgusting, okay? "Staff has attempted to remedy things by providing a sort of concierge service, periodically coming into the dog park to clean out the bowls from time to time. Unfortunately, our dogs don't abide by staff schedules, they're just dogs, they do what they do when they want to do it." Do any of you up there know anyone who hires anyone to service their pet's water bowl? And keep in mind, unlike a home setting, dog parks have sick dogs as well as healthy dogs. By way of contrast, the dog park in Irvine utilizes a similar arrangement, a simpler one. That's how filthy it was. There we go. They have a spigot of sorts about three feet up with dark, with stainless steel bowls on the bottom there that you can get at Target for pennies, okay? Close up, there's a spigot, you just press the thing, water goes down, it's pretty much self-cleaning. Here's a photo taken a few weeks ago of our arrangement, okay? That's filthy. That's not okay, guys, you know? I've run out of photos. "I implore you, on behalf of our small dogs, to intercede with staff on this matter. I've exhausted all attempts with staff over the past three years. I personally am unwilling to compromise the health and safety of our dogs. It's a small matter, doesn't require a lot of money. I'd appreciate your help on this matter. Thank you."
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
This week, I think all of Costa Mesa was surprised that Chief Sharpnick not only had retired, announced his retirement, but in the intervening weeks filed a claim on November 8 alleging that he's being forced out of his position after he raised issues about the most recent budget development. And I think we all know about that budget, where the nasty disrespectful memos flew from all areas of staff and the mayor, the mayor pro tem, as well as others. I think what we fail to realize is that, you know, you council members are for four years. You come, you go, maybe you stay for eight years, maybe you move on to something else. Our law enforcement, our professional law enforcement's 25, 30, 35 years, and every change of a council, somehow there's some type of interference with our police department. They are the professionals, you're just the electeds. So my question on some of this is that Daily Pilot wrote, I thought, a very accurate description of what's going on, and some of the discrimination, some of the retaliation that he complained about was improper interference into the affairs of the police department about the budget process. And like I said, I think we all realize on those, on those messages. And when he finally did give his notice to retire, that he was going to retire, there was like a seven or eight-day lag between his notice and when the city manager's office did anything about it. So he went ahead and informed his people, because, number one, he loves his department, he loves his people. So why was there that lag in that time? Was it because Tammy Letourneau left? Was it because Justin Martin left? Now you've got your chief of police leaving, you've got other staff members that are very tired of the nastiness and the interference by some of the council members, the mayor, the mayor pro tem. Some of the comments, I would expect the city manager to be able to manage. That's when you diffuse a situation, you enter into a conversation, and you make things better. So now they're threatening that they're going to investigate the police chief on some kind of what charges. I mean, this is disgraceful. Our city has had nothing but upheaval in the last 10 years. Everybody hoped that your council would somehow make nice with it, and it certainly hasn't. So Chief Sharpnick, you have my respect. Costa Mesa Police Department has my respect.
Thank you.
Well, you gave him 15 seconds more, so I think I can at least finish my conversation.
No, I didn't. The timer's automatic. Thank you, Ms. Pedoni. The timer's automatic. Next speaker.
Good evening, council members. Let me start by saying that I'm tired, I'm frustrated, and I can use a couple of other explicitives, but I think I'll refrain, since we've got so many officers here tonight. But I am tired of coming to my place of business and seeing drag addicts hanging out, passed out, and I have to call the police department to come and talk to them and remove them. I don't know what in God's name are you people are doing. You bought a flipping building, we don't have, as far as I know, you haven't hired an engineer, you haven't hired an architect, it's a vacant property. I drove by a couple of weeks ago. We're going on another holiday season, nothing is happening, and how many countless individuals have suffered and have perished since this whole thing with get a building and moving in started? Why? Why can't we move this? I fix tens of items per week doing my scope of work. I don't get an award, it's what I do. I fix things, but I can't fix stupid. What is going on here? John, you told me you'll call me. You haven't called me, I'm here. Do I need to be nasty? I don't want to be nasty. You don't want my nasty. I'm telling you, I won the first battle, you don't want to do it again. It's going to be that much more expensive for me, and it'd be a hell of a lot more expensive for you. Why can't we fix this? I keep asking you, fix the dog park. No. Yet you're putting the Snoopy House on the grass, and at the end of Christmas, and I get it, you're going to pay to fix the grass again. You have money for that, you don't have money for my pet. Why is that? Why does one thing has to take precedence over another? Getting mad at you and getting an answer is two different things. The majority of the constituents will not come up here and speak to you in a matter of which I do. They don't feel comfortable. Personally, I don't care. I need this stuff fixed, and if you can't fix it, somebody else can fix it. I'm glad to see the two puppets aren't here tonight, because I was going to go off on that end of it. But I am tired. Why can't we get a budget for the dog park, yet you're spending millions of dollars on sober living? And I know you're going through the process, I appreciate that, that's great. But can we find a small budget? I mean, half of those drunks that are ending up are coming from there. Why don't we hold them accountable? There's got to be a remedy. You got to think outside the box. If one thing doesn't work, find another one.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak. I have a couple of issues. It's nice that you got a check for a million dollars. I hope you will use that to restore the airplane, that's in Airplane Park, actually. It's my understanding that it was quite significantly damaged, either through negligence or incompetence. So it is up to you to, as far as I'm concerned, to see that it's repaired. The kids do not need $3 million or however many millions of dollars you're spending for a playground. They were playing fine, having a lot of fun on the airplane. There was nothing much else down there. So I think that, first of all, you need to give the park back to the people, take all the fencing down, and get it up and running. And you, I seem to have some delusion that doing, keeping it fenced off is actually going to solve, help solve the homeless problem. It's not. The homeless people are all over the place. Guy sleeping in the post office on Fairview today, when I went up there. There's guy changing his clothes behind the utility cabinet right across from your bridge shelter. Saw that about a week ago. So the homeless problem isn't going away, no matter what you do with Lyons Park. That's kind of the central area for the homeless. The other thing is, I have a lot of concern that the, you wonder why the, you can't recruit police officers here? Well, who wants to come here when they don't have state-of-the-art equipment that protects not only the residents, but the officers in the field as well? So you need to get going on the mobile command vehicle and get that going. That is needed. If you have, it's something that's happened like in some of the other cities in California, you're going to need something like that. And so I think you need to get moving on that. And I also agree with the previous speaker that I didn't appreciate some of the snarky comments that were made to Chief Sharpnick's concerns about the budget process. So you need to be a little more realistic in your comments, and it doesn't do anything, it doesn't do anything to enhance your image with the residents when you start getting snarky and nasty. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will hear from the council members.
I believe there was.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I got caught up on the snarky comments. Okay. Model engineers, love to have you come up. We'll end the public comments with something positive.
This will be a fun one.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Bob Harrison. I'm the, one of the engineers, conductors, and vice president of operations at the railroad in, at Fairview Park, commonly called the Orange County Model Engineers. Let's see here. The first thing I want to talk about is what we're going to do tonight, and it is the purpose of, OCME has an award that we give out to individuals and organizations who have been very supportive of our railroad and community, and that is an OCME honorary membership, which all you councilmen people, I shouldn't say councilmen, council people have. council people have. And we have identified two organizations and one individual we think have done an outstanding job for us. You probably remember the run weekend we had in September, which was a, I'm sorry, October was the big one. September's when we unveiled a new engine. October was our pumpkin and scarecrow festival there. It was a tremendous success, close to 3,500 riders that weekend. That's a lot of people. We had six trains running continuously. Now, that would not have been as great a success if it hadn't been for the pumpkins. About three years ago, we didn't have any pumpkins. And a young man, young relative to me anyway, named Rob Gagny approached me and said, "Bob, we're having pumpkins next year, and we're going to make share of that." And he did. He followed through. Now, the organizations that I'm interested, I'm going to be calling forward are the Coast to Mesa Firefighters Association and the Coast to Mesa Police Officers Association. They both stepped forward this year and did a great job of supplying the pumpkins for us. And we are going to make those two groups honorary members.
Yay. Come on down.
Looking around here.
We're going to give, we're going to give you a chance to make a few words, and then the council's going to join you down here for the picture?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Come right on down. I'm just going to state that, I'll comment about that. That was really good. We've done it for the past three years with the Firefighters Association. This year, the Police Officers Association joined us. We love that. We were able to supply pumpkins to a lot more basically kids than we would have in the past. Now, the individual, that's the third award. That's an individual award, and we're going to present all of that. Is to, of course, Captain Rob Gagny of the Coast to Mesa Fire Department. He has been incredible to work with, such a nice guy, and he follows through on everything. So if you would join us down here, we'll go ahead and present the...
Wonderful. Thank you. Do we have anyone from the Police Association? No?
You got anybody out here from the Police Association?
I don't.
You're welcome.
You look like a police officer.
Was that your picture taken? Hi, Arliss.
Hi. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
She's calling me, yeah.
Come in. Come on in.
I'm sorry. I've got three up here. I've got three. We're going to start with, and then we will.
Please.
On behalf of the previous council, I want to present these honorary memberships to outstanding organizations and a credible man I've got to thank. I really appreciate what you've done. So.
Do you want to say a few words?
I guess the mayor wants me to say a quick few words. If you haven't been to Fairview Train Park, you need to go. It's a great event for all the kids. When you see your faces and the joy they get out of riding, this is such a great city. I mean, we've got everything from the Performing Arts Center to Fairview Park. It's, it's a great event that they have over there and a great time. And it's a pleasure for us to be able to provide the pumpkins and fire engines and train rides.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that. And thank you all for all your volunteer efforts to keep the trains running. Thanks so much. We appreciate it. Okay, next item of business is now council member comments. Each council member will have four minutes, and I'll go with the people in the queue. We'll start with Councilmember Shabas.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming to today's council meeting. Very happy. It's now fall and winter. I like the darkness more than the hot, and it's always good to be cold and wearing nice little jackets. I'll begin by saying a quick, a quick, I hope you get well to Sandy Guinness, our council member who's gone today. She did have a fall earlier this week and is recovering in her house. I know her very well, and she will not miss meetings or anything, so I'm hopeful she'll see her recovery. Alongside that, at a great time this past week, had a chance to visit two amazing organizations in my district in West Coast to Mesa. First, I got a chance to visit Redemption Church's Learning Center over in the south part near District Five. It's a local community group run by a church that services seven children and helps them with reading and academic enrichment. It's always incredible to see members of our community stepping up to help out children that need a bit more help, and really happy to see that in my community. Alongside that, today I had the privilege of touring Think Together Shalimar Learning Center properly and going in the facility. It's incredible how, how much one nonprofit has done in a, in a, in a single street and neighborhood community. So for those that don't know, they actually operate in this, in the community itself, and they have programs from really like childhood till high school. They have a program from, from zero to five, prenatal. They have a program for the first through sixth graders and a program for the high school and middle school kids. It's always a gem seeing us come together and helping out those in the community. It's always a gem going to Shalimar Street and just seeing what an amazing community there is there. For those that don't know, the street's actually blocked up on both ends. You have a really neat space in the street that no cars can drive on. It's always, you're always there. You see kids driving around and skateboards, on their bikes, playing in the small Shalimar Park. It's, it's really breathtaking to see. Alongside that, I just want to echo a few more words of appreciation to our Assemblywoman Kati Petronius. You know, she's also investing in our community. That, the, the million-dollar grant we got for Lyons Park really helped us move forward that project and finish that vision we have for downtown Costa Mesa. You know, library's been an amazing success. Actually went there last week with my cousin, who's visiting from Mexico. And when she was visiting the library, she was able to find books in Spanish. And actually, our bookstore there also has books in Spanish and other languages as well, and all for affordable $2 price. So definitely, guys, that's a vision we want to see fulfilled. Really glad to see everywhere I go, our, our great city, we see people investing in our youth and investing in our community. So with that, thank you, guys, for being here today, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Mar.
Yes, thank you. And this, I'm actually just going to talk about things from today. That's how busy it's been. So I was able to visit Woodland Elementary this morning. I was there ostensibly to visit their arts master's program, which has been a success, believe it or not. The TK and kindergarten students were studying MC Usher, which kind of blew my mind, actually, because I don't think I knew who that was until high school. So that was wonderful. And then on the other side of the playground, I saw rockets being shot off. So I asked what that was, and I was able to visit their STEM classroom. Yes, TK and kindergarteners in a STEM classroom, which was pretty awesome. And they were learning about rockets. And the teacher asked them, "What is the fuel for this rocket?" And they all responded, "Air," which was actually kind of awesome, because I also don't think I knew what the fuel for rockets was until high school. So wonderful. Ran into some parents I know there. So I, I maintain that there's only like 20 people who actually live in Costa Mesa, because I seem to see all of them. So the other thing, this is really Assemblywoman Kati Petronius is a knight. Earlier today, I attended her oversight hearing addressing veteran homelessness. They had multiple panels of experts. The first were actually three veterans who spoke specifically about the experience of transitioning out of the military, and really kind of what a dangerous period of time that is financially. If you haven't been good about saving your money while you're in the military, all of a sudden you're thrust into expensive Orange County, trying to come up with first and last month's rent, often have kids involved as well, looking for a job. If you go to work for, or excuse me, if you go to school and start using the GI Bill, I've actually experienced this as well. There's all kinds of transitions that occur with the GI Bill, and so you can't count on it as a regular income. Sometimes all it takes is a mistaken email, and the next thing you know, your housing allowance for that month is just not going to show up for another three weeks. And so it was really, really wonderful to hear our Assemblywoman paying close attention to those kinds of problems and to get her head around what sorts of things we can do specifically to alleviate veterans homelessness, but more broadly to address the issue of transitioning out of the military and the impact that has on so many families, especially in Orange County. And then last but not least, because the homeless shelter and homelessness was brought up during public comments, the last time I checked, we're 30 folks. I don't know if that number's gone up.
31.
31. There you go. Every time I ask, it's gone up. So we're at 31 folks who have been permanently housed out of the shelter. We remain in the temporary facility, but we do have a, an engineer and an architect who are engaged on the, on the permanent shelter facility on Airway Avenue. You know, we gave a presentation about this a couple of weeks ago, but the model that we've been using in terms of the social workers and the staff that we have operating within the shelter and outside of the shelter, and the continuum of care that as a city we have established that allows people to remain in the system, whether they're in the shelter or in permanent housing or on the street, is, is quite remarkable. And so, you know, I, I think that's one of our big success stories as I look at a year or so on city council. That, that really is something that the community should be aware of and should be very proud of. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
There we go. I want to thank everyone for their comments tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Mar, for describing the, the shelter operations and successes there. Pretty much everything we heard tonight, we are working on. Everything's a little bit slower than we may have wanted as we onboarded a new city manager. Staff are working very hard. So I do feel confident that we're positioning very well for a strong 2020. So please be patient with all of us on that. Want to congratulate my father. Actually, he's probably too busy to be watching this tonight. He retired about a year ago from teaching for about 30 years in high school. He right away got started on his dream to learn how to fly. But I actually just learned this weekend that he also got promoted to drive trains. So he is a Orange County Model Engineer Conductor now. So if anyone wonders why I'm always trying to do so much, you see the role models that I'm following. Last week, I got to speak a couple of times with Costa Mesa teenagers at both Costa Mesa High School and Save Our Youth. I'm always impressed when I talk to them. They're, they're probably some of the toughest audience, gave some really great ideas, and I want to be looking for ways to engage our youth more in city activities, helping us understand the needs and the issues that, that our teenagers are facing. I got to participate in a restoration project organized by a teenager, an Eagle Scout at the Huntington Beach Wetlands. It's really nice to be outside doing that event, and want to encourage everyone to participate in Costa Mesa's next restoration project on Saturday, December 14th at 9:00 a.m. at Fairview Park. Spent a lot of time outside. Just this past weekend, we had our November Community Bike Ride. It was probably our most fun to date. We stayed in, mostly in West Side Costa Mesa, exploring some of the historical areas, or a little bit of Costa Mesa history, with stops at our 40-year-old local community theater, the Costa Mesa Playhouse. We looked at the mural in front of Fire Station Number Four that shows the history of Fairview Park. We got a special tour of the Estancia Adobe. It was really fun. We had new people on this ride, from as young as, I think, 10 years old to older. The December ride, our last ride of the year, is going to be really fun. You heard a little bit about it in the Costa Mesa Minute. We are delivering cookies to all of our police and fire stations by bike. It's going to be a really fun ride. We've designed it so that anyone can participate. We start with a very short, completely off-street ride, because we really want kids to be able to participate. So stay tuned for news on that. You've heard Mayor Protem Stevens and I talk about the work we're doing with the Early Childhood Coalition. We will be making some more announcements about that probably in December. One of the areas I'm going to be taking the lead on is work to make our public spaces more rich learning environments. So you saw a little bit of the activities that happened at Smart Camp. We got a great presentation from a UCI professor who helps design public spaces and playgrounds to really stimulate conversation, to help math learning, really fascinating stuff and, and easy to implement. I'm excited to be working on that. This weekend, want to encourage folks to participate in two events. On Saturday, there's an opportunity for a three-mile easy hike with the Sierra Club. Going to be exploring the Huntington Beach Wetlands, the least-tern nesting site in the Banning Ranch property. It's going to be guided by California naturalists. And on Sunday, we have the cyclocross returning to Costa Mesa. I've never done this before, but I'm going to participate as a beginner. I think they have a first-timer ride, and then they have a biker and doggy ride. So lots of ways to participate in that. You'll be able to, to try it out for the first time and then also watch the experts. That's at Belerick Park on Sunday, all-day, family-friendly event.
I think Arliss is having way too much fun as a council member. Mayor Protem Stevens.
So it's Thanksgiving time, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'll be in Costa Mesa. Like we, Thanksgiving is our holiday, so we have my wife's family and my family come to our house, and we've done it for many years, and it's a great tradition, and it's great to spend Thanksgiving in Costa Mesa. But wherever you spend Thanksgiving, I hope it's a great time. Now, onto responding or addressing some of the items of the public comments. The epic times issue, I think that that's an interesting thing, and I don't know where it falls, whether it's they have a First Amendment right to be there, or whether it's inappropriate for political speech to be there. I don't know, but I'm sure our city attorney will know the answer to that and look into it. The Bark Park enhancements, I actually just got, both, two, two speakers spoke about the Bark Park. I got some interesting news. There's a young man who's getting his Eagle Scout project. His name is Dean Romine, and he is planning to put dog agility equipment into the Bark Park. And so slightly more than a month ago only, I connected him with the Lions Club, and just as I was sitting up here, I got a text that the Lions Club granted him $750 for his Eagle Scout project. If anyone else is interested in helping out with that, let me know, and I'll connect you with young Dean Romine, who seems to be a great young man in our community. One of the speakers, and Councilmember Mar addressed this to a certain extent, said regarding the homeless, "Nothing is happening. How many people have perished? Well, you people do nothing." Well, that's definitely not the case. I mean, anybody who's paying attention to what we've been doing over the last year knows that we have a 50-bed shelter in the Lighthouse Church, which is the same amount of people that we will serve when we are at the airway location. We've housed 30 people. We've had many veterans, I think 12 veterans have been there. We've, we've housed over 170 people over that period of time since April. We're all very proud of the work that we're doing. So fewer people are perishing, and fewer people are in pain because of the work that we're doing. Anyway, I think that that's all I have to say to respond to the public comments at this time. Thank you, and I yield back the rest of my time to the mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's been a busy week, and as you can hear, your council is working really hard for you. I, too, attended the homeless veterans' hearing today and learned a lot, actually, from some of the administration representatives who were sharing about veterans' permanent supportive housing and housing needs, and the fact that there is money there. But I thought the quote from the one gentleman was super right, spot on, given what we're experiencing with inability to get some of that money. And that is that the challenge is getting the money from the state onto the streets. And that's the challenge that we have experienced as well, getting the money that's there, ready to serve the need into the locals who are providing the services. But to follow up with something that Mayor Protem Stevens mentioned, yes, we have indeed, since April 5th, when we opened our shelter, we've had 12 veterans that have gone through the shelter, and we've permanently housed two. And of those two, one of them actually was diverted back to family. So that's actually a big win. And then in addition to that, our amazing homeless outreach team has assisted 172 veteran clients since 2014. So we're doing a lot to, of work in that space. And thank you, Councilmember Mar. I'm not going to repeat everything you said about the progress we're making towards the permanent shelter. We've definitely hired, hired all of the professionals necessary, and we're moving forward. I also wanted to point out that I would like to get an update on the dog park. I would like a like a formal presentation about the Dog Park. I'm getting texts now from people who don't come to city council meetings about the Dog Park. So if we could please, we need to fix the Dog Park. I mean, if we need to do something different, then we should do it. But I don't, I don't know what we're doing on the Dog Park. So I'd like to get a formal presentation on that. Wanted to thank our city staff. When you come to Snoopy House this year, you're going to see the city staff have put in an incredible amount of time, our maintenance staff, to upgrade all the Snoopy House. They've painted, they've fixed mechanical things, they've added some new features, and it's going to look great. And we're excited and grateful for the creative and talented city staff we have to help us with that. The other issue, yes, airplane. Of course, we're going to keep the airplane. Why would anyone think differently? We're going to keep the airplane. We're going to improve the airplane. The airplane's staying at Airplane Park. And then we also have my 11th Annual Coat Drive. So this is my 11th year to partner with our community to get donations of new or very, very, very gently-used kids' coats. And there'll be a box in the Costa Mesa PD, and there'll also be boxes around town. There's going to be one at Miguel's Jr. There's also going to be one. I believe that the cheerleaders are helping to gather some coats. So if you know one of our cheerleaders in town, you can probably talk to them, and they'll take the coats from you. Our goal this year is 500 coats. And it doesn't seem like you'd need a coat because it's so hot. But trust me, by the time we get past the holidays, it's going to be chilly, especially in the evenings. And, you know, my favorite story about this program is a young man who I met when he was in college at UC Santa Cruz. And he now works in Washington, DC for a congressman, Congressman Lou Correa. And I was on a tour, talking to some of our congressional representatives last year, and he was there in the office, and he approached me, and he thanked me because he never knew when he was a kid where he got the coat. And then now that he's an adult, he knew about the Coat Drive, and he wanted to thank me for that. So it does make a difference, and it matters. And kids need coats, bottom line. Okay, I would also like to remind everyone, please, 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 don't just, like, walk by someone that you think is experiencing homelessness or is in need. Call the number 714-754-5252. We have trained professionals who, their job is to go out and assist and divert people into our shelter or to some other services, 714-754-5252. And that includes if they are on private property, if you need help there. And then finally, I just want to congratulate Descanso. One-year anniversary this weekend for Descanso, which is the new Mexican restaurant that's at the Mesa Verde Plaza. And they're a local, family-owned business, and they just celebrated one year. So congratulations to them. All right, report from the city manager, Ms. Farrell Harrison. Oh, before we get to there, I'm going to reserve my comments regarding the police equipment because actually, new business item number one directly responds to that.
Thank you. Good evening. I just had a couple of brief updates. One duly noted, we'll bring back a formal Dog Park presentation as requested. We'll be happy to do that.
Or just fix it.
But we'll give you an update in terms of what the plans are and what the future holds for the Dog Park improvements. I also wanted to mention an update on our parking study. And so we've received a good amount of interest from consultants that have looked at our requests for proposals and our scope of work. They had a series of questions, pretty in-depth questions. They wanted further information, so we've been working with them on that for the selection of a consultant to conduct the study with a focus on Districts 4 and 5 and then the rest of the city. And then I also wanted to mention that I attended the annual Salute to Veterans event that took place at the OC Fair and Events Center. That was on November 9th. It was an extraordinary event. I have to say, I've been to many veterans' events over my lifetime, but this one was very unique in terms of the scope and just the presence and the involvement of labor organizations, obviously the OC Fair and Events Center, and so many other community members and a lot of families. Very family-friendly event with a lot of participation, and it was just a spectacular show of support for all of our veterans. It also featured the unveiling and the dedication of the A-4 Skyhawk jet, which is a 1950s-era Marine Corps jet. And so just seeing it so beautifully preserved and dedicated on November 9th was just a great experience and a very humbling one. And so before November leaves us, I just wanted to again thank every member of the audience, every member of the public, also our very own councilmember Andrea Marr, and everybody who served in our, you know, in our military because it's a big sacrifice, and we're also very thankful for it. And so just wanted to thank the Orange County Employees Association, many of our employees, our members of the Orange County Employees Association for also being present at the event and being sponsor of the event, as well as our police and fire and so many of our other employees. And so we have a short video that we wanted to share with you of this event, and I would just strongly encourage our residents and the community to come out next year. It's a spectacular event. There are free hot dogs and a lot of family fun.
Today, we celebrate all of you, and we are surrounded by dedicated men and women.
Thank you all for what you all do. Thank you for the people currently serving, and God bless us all.
We wish Happy Veterans Day to all veterans and a happy 244th birthday to all of us Marines.
First to fight for right and freedom and to keep our honor clean. We are proud to wear the title of the United States Marine.
That's cute. Just send that to Doug Mangione. Okay, next item of business. Before we go on to that, can we have a booth next year? Can we have some presents there somehow? That'd be great. City Attorney, Ms. Barlow, anything?
Just very quickly, we have been so busy, I haven't had time to prepare a report, but I'll try and give you an update on some legal matters at your next meeting. I do, however, wish to take 10 seconds here to say happy birthday to my babies, my young son and my daughter. They're twins, and it's, yeah, it's their birthday today, and I love them. I miss them.
Happy birthday. Okay, this is the time for our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and to remove from the consent calendar for discussion. I will be abstaining on consent calendar item number three, the warrant register regarding payments to Everett Dory LLP, as I have received contributions over $250 for my Senate campaign. Madam Clerk, have you received any requests from the council or public regarding items to be pulled?
Yes, one from the public, Ann Parker, has requested item number three, the warrant register.
Okay, and so...
Move the balance.
You got to, you have to...
Second.
Okay, call for the question.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, I will leave the room, and Mayor Protim Stevens.
Okay, item number three on the consent calendar. Could you read that, please, Madam Clerk?
Item three is the warrant resolution.
Okay, so our member of the public pulled it. Does the member of the public have some very relevant comments to make?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, good. Go. You've got three minutes. Hit it.
Okay, first of all, I don't put my name on the card for a reason because the prior majority council, if I put my name on the card, Brenda Green wouldn't call it till 1:00 in the morning. So we all had to make up different names. So I don't put my name on the card for a reason. So I would like to know why she says my name. It's not on the card. The last two times she's done that, I'm not sure it's legal. Ms. Barlow, if you could address that later, and I'd like to know why that is. Okay, so let's go to the consent calendar. First of all, I didn't catch this one before, but if you look on page seven, SoCal Recovery, that's the one that donates to Lee Raymond's, $5,000. I didn't know there was a separate lawyer for that one. And then also, he's also under the Everett Dory LLP, that's $136,000. You know, every two weeks, I want everyone to pay attention. We're putting about $200,000 out every two weeks because of sober living operators that are suing our city. One of them is right back here, Grant McNiff. He's head of the Orange County Sober Living Network. He's here to observe what goes on tonight for our legal case. And one thing I really resent is, if you look at this, they're wasting time. I've contacted Zafte Burns because they want to do another subpoena. Usually, I mean, deposition, usually they come here to subpoena me, but they don't have to. I'm glad. I'm ready, willing, and able. This is for you.
The warrants, the warrants.
Because I want, I want to testify. I think what's going on in our city is absolute corruption. Anyway, so they're saying, Zafte Burns is telling the federal court judge that I'm avoiding, avoiding giving a deposition. This is wasting your, your taxpayer dollars because they keep dragging the city attorney in to the courtroom and saying ridiculous things like this. For instance, my deposition shouldn't have taken four hours. They just kept repeating and repeating, wasting our taxpayer dollars. And furthermore, none of this should even, we shouldn't even be spending money on this if we had done something about it in the beginning, which Wendy Lees mentioned during public comment. You have to get a grip on something before it takes over your city. You don't just let it run rampant so that your corrupt officials can make money off of it. I'm sorry, but I'm going to keep doing it every two weeks until the taxpayers of Costa Mesa understand how much money, do you know how much police, we could have had 10 more policemen for the amount of money spent on it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Should I start on the Dog Park again?
No, not unless it's pertinent to the warrants. We're on number three, the warrants.
So regarding the warrants, as I mentioned earlier, and as the last speaker mentioned, $200,000 a month, two weeks, whatever it comes out to. So we're spending in on that, and it's causing all these other problems. And as far as I'm understanding, you're not looking to even recoup any of the legal fees for the city from this thing. Why? You're an attorney. Usually, if the losing party loses, they pay attorney fees. Happened to me. I had to pay. Why aren't they paying? Is they're losing their cases? Was it stipulated that we'll see you, but if we lose, we'll just move out of town? Is that the way it works with this whole thing? I know you can't give me an answer now, but...
Yeah, these are all rhetorical questions.
Well, it's kind of ridiculous because we're spending all this money, but we're not, we're getting some stuff back, you know? As I mentioned earlier, the two puppets aren't here who brought most of this stuff to town because I'd like for them to cut out their checkbooks and start paying some of this money back. That would be really nice. You know, this has just been rampant. It's been going on for 10 years? 10 years. The prior council started this mess, and they check out, and maybe we should drag them back in here and get them to bring their checkbooks. But I know you guys are trying, but how do you grip this thing? I mean, I know what court looks like, and it's an evil old by itself in essence, but it takes years to get in front of it. And yet, it's costing us money, but yet, we can enjoy our space because you're spending the money on that, not to mention that they're roaming our streets. Please, try a little harder. Maybe you can put a bumper sticker for everybody's seat. Try to fix stupid so they get the message. Thank you.
Thank you.
I went to the Board of Supervisors about a month ago, and in their consent calendar, they were absolutely dynamite on someone staying on point and relevant.
Is this about the warrants?
It is about the warrants.
What's your answer to, what's your, respond to the warrants.
The warrants?
Pay it to the warrants.
Oh, are you kidding me? After you let everybody else speak like that? So the Board of Supervisors and one, in one speaker.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Are you kidding me? After you let everybody else ramble and rant, you're not going to allow me to speak regarding the relevancy on the consent calendar? The very relevancy that the Board of Supervisor uses on every consent calendar item and on everybody that speaks? I suggest you all tune in and see how they handle the consent calendar for items that are specifically addressed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
May I approve the warrant?
Close public comment. Call for the question.
Motion carries 401 with Mayor Foley recused.
We have no old business tonight, and so we have no public hearings. And so we will move to new business. We have three new business items tonight. And Madam Clerk, will you please read item number one?
Thank you. This is approval of deferred finance, development services, information technology, and police department's request from fiscal year 2019-20 budget adoption. Presentation by Ms. Telford, Finance Director.
Good evening, Ms. Telford and Captain Glass.
Hello again. I apologize for the delay.
That's just one moment.
All right. I feel like we were just here a week ago.
We were.
So we have a very brief presentation in light of the fact that the council just reviewed these items at last Tuesday's study session. During the fiscal year 2019-20 budget adoption, several positions were requested, which were deferred, and the Finance Department was asked to bring these requests, along with the Police Department's requests, back for consideration once the preliminary fiscal year 1819 financial results were available, and the first quarter of the fiscal year 1920 was closed. On November 12th, 2019, last Tuesday, the city council considered the preliminary results, the pacing for the first quarter, and heard an update on the items that were ultimately deferred during the June 18th budget adoption. Finance staff had numerous discussions with IT and Development Services regarding their deferred positions. These needs remain critical since they help with staff retention and will enable the departments to better respond to three of the city council's goals, which are detailed in your agenda report. The recommended staffing changes include an additional FTE in the Finance Department, which was approved by city council on November 5th, the elimination of a part-time intern and part-time programmer analyst in the IT Department, which would create a full-time network administrator, it would eliminate one part-time code enforcement officer, and reclassify two part-time code enforcement officers to full-time. At the study session last week, I reported better-than-expected financial results for fiscal year 1819, and also noted that we look to be pacing on track and may end up with additional unanticipated revenues during this current year. In light of the good news, we are recommending approving the deferred staffing requests from the June budget adoption. In addition, during the budget process, the Police Department made a number of technology and equipment requests. Since then, the Police Department and Finance Department have developed a three-year implementation plan to fund the Police Department's most critical requests, which are included in attachment two. A phased approach will allow the city to address how to pay for these items, as well as set a realistic goal for implementation. As a part of the three-year plan, year one proposes purchasing the mobile command vehicle using a master financing agreement, purchasing five of the requested vehicles, and replacing the L3 in-car video equipment for all of the police vehicles. Year two proposes the construction of a store... Year two proposes the construction of a storage facility for the mobile command vehicle, the replacement of five more vehicles, and the replacement of the MDC laptop computers in all of the police vehicles. Year three proposes to purchase five more vehicles, and then the final two in future In the study session last week, I reported an estimated $2 million in unanticipated one-time revenues from sales tax that were received during fiscal year 1819. We are recommending the use of these one-time revenues to fund the year, the, sorry, to fund year one, for a total of 1.125 million, which includes a contingency amount for any unforeseen costs. Again, this would purchase the L3 in-car video, five of the vehicles, and it would allow for implementation of those projects. Approval of the recommended implementation plans for phase two and three would give us direction to make these requests a priority in the development of the fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2122 budgets. With all of this in mind, we are proposing to approve the IT Department staffing changes, eliminating one part-time intern and one part-time programmer analyst, and adding one full-time network administrator, eliminating one part-time code enforcement officer, and reclassifying two existing part-time code enforcement officers to full-time, authorize the city manager to enter into a master financing agreement for a principal amount not to exceed 1.5 million for the purchase of the mobile command vehicle. We will continue to seek grant funding, but would like the authorization to move forward if we're unsuccessful. The approval of a budget adjustment appropriating 1.125 million, which is the amount needed to upgrade or replace the L3 in-car video system, and the replacement of the five vehicles, again, a small amount of contingency for unforeseen costs, and to approve the three-year funding and implementation plan for the requested items. Captain Glass and I are available for any questions, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I, I'm going to say a few comments and questions, and if there's anyone in the queue, I'll call on them. Captain Glass, in looking at the proposal, can you share with us why we would phase the purchasing of the vehicles? Can you remind us why that is necessary?
So initial list, yes, ma'am, ma'am, the initial list had 17 vehicles through our full fleet. We think phasing this in and staging it is a more practical approach, as well as allows us to make sure we're getting the equipment that we need, fully implemented, funded, and out there, as well as systematically doing it allows us to make sure it's gradually progressing, opposed to if it's a one-time, we try to do 17 vehicles, which would be very difficult. We'd be in the same position down the road. We've used this technique in other times when we've changed our fleet out. It just allows us to replace the high-mileage vehicles as they get to that point or as needed throughout the years.
So, Ms. Telford, we, as part of this proposal, we are going to lock in that as part of our planning for years two and three of the three-year plan, we will lock in planning for purchasing of five vehicles for customers at PD. But if, for whatever reason, there's a need to purchase six or more in any given year, that's still going to be a part of the budget discussion. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And right now, Captain Glass, you don't anticipate needing more than five per year for the next three years?
That's going to give us the ability to systematically do it and then replace the ones that need to be replaced.
Okay, great. And you'll let us know if you need more?
We will always.
Okay. And then on the L3 police car video system, we're doing that all in the first year?
Yes.
Okay. And there was one others that I was going to ask about the phasing. Oh, it was the police vehicles, the police vehicle computers. Why not just do those in year one?
So both these are major critical infrastructures for the organization that's used on a daily basis for the officers, our staff out there in the field. But we do believe, you know, at this point in the year, it'd be nice to focus on one of the projects to get that taken care of. We'll have to establish a working group, could do some testing and evaluation, determine what the vendor or the system is going to be to replace or upgrade our L3 in-car video. So allows us to focus on that, being that we're coming early December, coming in, we'll have that completed, follow up the next year with MDCs, and do the same thing with that system, where we're going to test and evaluate that system that we're looking at graduate or moving towards, potentially laptops, and then making sure that's implemented properly.
Okay, so it's your preference to put it off for the next year's budget just because of the, you want to do more to plan for it? Is that what I'm understanding?
We want to get one of these projects going because it's critical to the organization, move forward on it, make sure it's, you know, fully tested, implemented, and then we move on to the next one. It gives us at least the opportunity to start pursuing one of these, knowing that within two years, if it even takes that long, we'll have these two critical systems in place.
Okay. All right, well, that's all I had. I really appreciate the collaborative approach. It's refreshing. Mayor Pro Tim Stevens.
When we were studying the budget back in June, I asked a whole series of questions to the Chief Sharpneck about the asset forfeiture fund to determine whether that was a alternative source of funding as opposed to a budget adjustment. And maybe that would be a budget adjustment, that it would be maybe adjusting it within categories, but I'm interested in, to see where we're at with that. So back when I was asking the questions, I think there was a $690,000 fund balance in the asset forfeiture fund. What is the current balance approximately?
The fund balance for the asset forfeiture fund is not an accurate way to measure the available cash because a part of that money is restricted until it's formally released by the federal government. I believe there's about $550,000 in cash. There is one item that will come before council at the next meeting to use, I think it's $60,000 of that balance for one of the items on here, the CCTV system. It was an item that is not in any of the phases because the Police Department had chosen to, there it is, right in the middle, had chosen to move forward on it using those dollars. So I would say it's a good estimate that there's likely about $500,000.
Okay. So if, if, I mean, so if there's $500,000, that's, that's net of the $60,000 that we would spend on the CCTV. So what is, from a budgetary or planning or fiscal standpoint, what is the benefit of retaining a half a million dollars in an asset forfeiture fund and then doing a budget adjustment whereby we, what's the ask here? We do a budget adjustment of 1.125 million. Why not use the money in the asset forfeiture fund and do a budget adjustment of 600 and, whatever the number is, 25? You know what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay. Why would we do, or a portion of that, or do, use that asset forfeiture fund to somehow defray the amount of money that we're spending from our unrestricted general funds? What is the thinking there? What's the methodology?
It's definitely a possibility. However, in our conversations, in finances conversations with the Police Department, that is one source of funds where they could use, that they could use for smaller purchases, similar to what I mentioned for the CCTV system. There are likely going to be smaller purchases over the course of the next couple of years. That way, they wouldn't have to come forth with requests for general fund dollars. They would already have dedicated funding for some of those smaller requests. Asset forfeiture dollars are also unusual in nature, where they are not a steady stream of revenues. The money that we received during 1819 was absolutely unanticipated. We received it and weren't really given notice that we were going to be receiving it.
How did we get it?
So with asset forfeiture, the way it works is that these are seizures of taking place over years. Some of these come six years later. So there's no way to predict when we're going to receive it, when the course of the case is adjudicated, and then really our percentage is very limited, especially in today's age of law enforcement, where we do not have a dedicated narcotics individual with HIDA or a regional team. It's all local level, stuff that we're working on now. So the things that we did see that helped us pay for the 800 megahertz project that was multimillion dollars over the last couple of years that we're working on, that all came through all these asset forfeiture stuff, that's kind of gone now with that, those large seizures that we had at the time. So now it's small, incorrect involvement, 13%, maybe 10% smaller portion seizures too that we're even getting that money from, and it just kind of trickles in as those cases are adjudicated.
Right. And last year, I remember when we were looking over the budget, in the last budgetary cycle, we spent roughly $54,000 of money from the asset forfeiture fund, and I can't remember what, what we spent it on. And, and, you know, Captain Glass, you made a point that, what was the megahertz thing? That it was some large project?
The 800 megahertz was, which is our communications infrastructure for the city and countywide.
Right. But nevertheless, we still have this balance of about a half a million dollars.
Yes, right now we do.
Right. And, and we have everything that, you know, at least foreseeable, as we sit here today, foreseeable for the next four years, included on our chart, right? As we sit here today.
Well, I'll speak from my experience over the years, is that things always pop up.
Sure.
And we've used that asset forfeiture fund, you know, through the years, it's been used for so many different things. Besides these major projects, we're already planning on using it towards some of the items we identified. We talked about the drone program. We talked about the digital imaging system. So we are looking at using funds in our support towards those, accomplish it in conjunction with the plan that we've developed already. But it's been used for remodeling aspects of the Police Department or some shelving. It's been used for equipment that was used for our special investigation units. It just really depends on what comes up. It is a resource that we could fall back on in emergency situations, especially when, if we don't have it set aside already in our budget. So for example, we replaced DVRs required for our security system in, like I said, different projects that have gone over the years, it's funded.
Is there some like, you know, I guess, like methodology or benchmark or something like that for the, the funding level that should be in an asset forfeiture fund from, you know, from a financial perspective? You know, Ms. Telford or Ms. Farrell Harrison, if you know from your experience?
For that particular fund there, you know, it's because it's so inconsistent with how we receive money, there are specified uses. It is a restricted funding source. There really is no benchmark or best practice of how much should be maintained in that fund. To be honest, most organizations only have a general fund policy, like a benchmark policy, and maybe even a capital, but that's usually about it.
Ms. Farrell Harrison?
Yeah, I would add that I feel very comfortable with the fund balances in the fund right now and not dipping into it further, just to have an additional contingency in case unexpected issues arise, especially since we don't have a dedicated funding stream for citywide equipment. And even though we've created an equipment fund and we do fund it, it is not at the level that it needs to be to be able to fund all of the city's departments. And so at least this gives us another safety net, if you will, for the Police Department if an unanticipated issue arises, and we can use those funds to address their needs. I think if the city had an equipment fund that was fully funded, all of the rolling stock of the city, all of its vehicles, all the technology needs, and then maybe a lower fund balance would make sense. But I think, given the fact that we don't have as robust an equipment fund citywide as we'd like, and we're going to have to build that up, I think it's safe to keep this fund balance at the level that it is so that we can address anything that comes up that hasn't been planned.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Marr?
Yeah, so I think at the last meeting, we indicated certainly if we could find grant funding available for anything in general in the city, that we should be pursuing it vigorously. I do have some concerns, though, about waiting until April of 2020 to make a decision about the MCV. I mean, what is our sense of the likelihood of actually being able to secure a grant? Is this sort of a, like, that's a great idea, but unrealistic? Or do you think that there's potential that there's something out there we should be looking at?
It's a great idea. We have been working quite extensively with Towns and Public Affairs, our consulting firm that we use for grant, research, and applications. There is a possibility. We have applied for a particular grant, not for the MCV, but for other equipment over the last couple of years. Unfortunately, we have been unsuccessful. So the challenge is, if we were to apply, I don't estimate that our success rate would be significant. I, you know, it's, it's possible, but not probable. You know, making it a regional mobile command vehicle would probably increase our likelihood, but that would take away from its availability at the local level, which I think, especially from the Police Department's perspective, is not preferred. So it gives us the opportunity to hold off just a little bit to exhaust all options. If the council were to decide to have us pull the trigger on the financing sooner, that's possible as well.
Yeah, I think my sense would be that, you know, we could spend another couple of weeks seeing if there's some other grant funding source, but if we don't think it's very likely, I don't want to delay another five months for the purchase of the, of the vehicle. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think I'd echo that. I know that Chief Snowden has been telling me for years that there's all this grant funding. If we made it a public safety mobile command vehicle as opposed to a police mobile command vehicle, so I think we're planning to do that. It'll be shared by police and fire. So does that make a difference in being able to be eligible for the grants?
So back in the day, yes. Public safety and having those kind of approaches and regionalization has always been, and that's still a huge thing, especially UWASI. And back in the day, we could ask for our own individual Bearcat, which is a tactical vehicle, and we'd get it, everybody got those, and we're supposed to share them. That has gone far and by the wayside. Even back in 2011, when I was overseeing telecom and emergency management and had SWI, I was looking at grants just to get a simple tactical vehicle, and the state, as well as the county, has totally got away from that approach. And we've looked at different things that we wanted to do this city for, but usually everything is focused towards regionalization and big countywide projects. This is not a regional item. This is going to be geared for public safety. It is a public safety, fire and police, where we have that communications, and then just we could respond to these incidents. It's going to be mobile with our MDCs, computers, communications, dispatch that we currently have in this organization that does not connect with everybody else, different cities and stuff.
Okay, so my, I'm inclined to trust your judgment on whether it's worth the wait or not, and let, you know, Captain Glass, I think you know well enough whether we're going to be competitive or eligible and whether it's worth waiting for. So I'm inclined to just trust your judgment on that because, of course, I don't know.
Well, thank you very much. But my judgment or my opinion on that is that I think it'd be very difficult. We would be prolonging the decision that's going to eventually come down to the city will be placing if we're going to move forward to finances.
Yeah, that seems reasonable to me. Okay. And I had two other questions. What happened with the weight room? Did we get the weight room resolved?
Yes, the weight room has been rebuilt. We have individuals down there on a regular basis and taking advantage of that opportunity, and so it's going well.
Okay, excellent. And then the equipment fund, are we planning to, as we move forward in what I'll call correcting our budgetary processes? Is that one of the areas that we're going to be targeting to create an equipment fund that's actually funded?
Yes, we, we have a bit of work ahead of us. We have already started. In fact, Monday, we met on the 2021 budget process, the Finance Department did, with the city manager, and we have already begun conversations about a plan of attack, if you will, that involves public services. It involves quite a bit of work. It will take time. It won't happen during this next budget cycle. The problem developed over more than a decade, so it will take more than just a fiscal year to correct it. But we are absolutely discussing it and working on a solution.
Well, thank you for identifying the problem. Appreciate that. And Captain Glass, one more question. You mentioned that we still don't have a dedicated narcotics, either unit or individual. So what's our, what's our plan? Because I think you know that we all up here want to get back to having our full, complete Police Department with our specialty units and... police department with our specialty units and robust agency. So what's our plan for that?
And like I say, we are doing that. You know, we are continuously bringing on new individuals to our organization. Our recruitment efforts are in full swing. We have several in the academy, one graduating this week on Thursday. And then we have multiple classes that have one or two individuals and then several in line. Talking with city manager, we've talked about projections going into it. But this is also, as has been discussed this year and next year, some retirements and attrition coming up. But yes, we are making efforts in that. We are, our specialties are been, bodies have been put in those and we're creating those opportunities for staff. We just went through a process right now, making sure, you know, rotation, because we try to diversify and make sure they get different experiences, bringing those bodies in and new officers getting those opportunities and some of the senior ones staying with the institutional knowledge in their special assignments. You know, we know we just did our K-9 unit. In regards to narcotics, you know, several years ago, with the downsizing, we focused more on a special investigations unit that does similar undercover work and also addresses a lot of the community issues before we had two different. You know, that team's been doing an amazing job over the last several years. And we, I'm sure the community as well as everybody has seen some of the major arrests and work they've done with, you know, with the state as well as with the feds in regards to counterfeit pills and all the different presses and stuff like that. Those were, that was that team. And that team's doing an amazing job. So they've still been out there doing this. As we get to our full numbers and we continue to build, we add those individuals to those different assignments based on their workload.
Great. So one of the speakers earlier indicated that you were having a problem recruiting because you didn't have equipment. Is that true?
I'm going to say we are recruiting very well. We have several, you know, we're doing regular testing processes. We are identifying individuals on a regular basis. You know, part of it is we're fighting through the same pool that every other law enforcement agency is. And so that does make it different. Plus, while also we always, you know, it's a process for individuals coming on to the organization, you know, besides making it pass, just some initial questions, backgrounds and all that. So even when we do identify strong candidates, sometimes they don't make it all the way through. It's a continuous work. It's always been work, even in our heyday, when we were at 164. We had a hard time getting to 164 based on it's just difficult to keep on getting bodies as attrition. But our department, our recruitment team and staff have been doing an excellent job. And then we see, we're seeing the numbers. We see the people that we're going to be processing to get into the academies throughout the remainder of this year as well as 2020.
Great. Now, if you were to share with young people out there, I know we had some young people in the audience and maybe there's some people on TV, who knows if anyone's watching, what would you share in terms of, what do you need to do in high school to be able to be eligible to be a police officer?
Well, I'd always suggest, you know, get involved where you can in your community as well as, you know, explore program or different entry level positions if you are interested in law enforcement so you could get that experience and exposure. You know, we don't take new officers right on at 19, you know, wait 21 to get a little maturity for the stuff that you're going to experience and see out there in the field. But I'd say get involved. I would also really emphasize education. In today's age, you know, I think it's important just, you know, whatever your degree is going to be on, but I believe getting a degree helps continue your growth and your development that you use those skills later in life and apply directly to the demand of law enforcement and, you know, and the demands and requests of the community and society in today's law enforcement age.
And then if there's anything that is kicking people out of being eligible, what would it be? Like good candidates, but then they can't clear the background check. What's the, what are some of the red flags?
Some things would just be, you know, dishonesty. You know, some people try to hide or they're embarrassed in situations. You should always be truthful, obviously, getting into a career in law enforcement. Other ones is just making sound decisions, you know. Being a police officer requires an individual with maturity. It requires an individual who's able to interact with the public and make those decisions and have those sound decisions under stressful circumstances that you're not always exposed to. And just being able to work with individuals. Good interpersonal skills are huge.
Great. Thank you so much. And I went off topic a little bit, but I thought it'd be a good PSA. Okay, I'm going to open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Come to one of the two podiums.
Evening, council. As Finance Director Telford mentioned, last week was a study session on FY 18, 19, and then looking at first look at preliminary numbers for 19, 20. And a week before, that was a week ago, a week before that meeting, she presented to the FIPAC committee basically the same presentation for FY 18 and 19 and 19 and 20. So I made comments both at FIPAC and then last week's study session. But tonight, I just wanted to thank Finance Director Telford and her finance team because all of this has been moved up about three months. In years past, the first look at the prior year was always at the mid-year in February. Obviously, this is three months before February. So I want to thank her and her team. I know she's sword-handed, as she just mentioned, some open wrecks in the finance department. And just wanted to thank her and I want to thank Captain Glass, working with the finance department. They seem to have resolved the issue of the police equipment and police funding. A lot of publicity last May-June timeframe, nothing got done because there was just a lot of noise, but nothing got done. It seems like in the last three months, the noise subsided and something got done. So congratulations to both of them and working together and also with the city manager. I'm sure, I'm optimistic that things will get taken care of and look forward to February so we can look at the mid-year. Thank you.
Thank you for your generous contributions to our community, Mr. Tabata. Next speaker.
Thank you for letting me speak on this. You need to move ahead with the mobile command vehicle. Costs will only continue to escalate the longer you delay it. So you might as well bite the bullet now and, you know, get the police department and fire department, I agree, it should be a shared command vehicle. And you should move ahead with the financing because chances are, applying for a grant takes a significant amount of time and as was stated, it may not be fruitful in the end. So then you're just delaying it more and more. So I think you need to move ahead with it. And the interest rates are low now, so you know, who knows what it's going to be like in a year from now. So I think you need to move ahead, give the police department and fire the tools to do their job better, protect not only the community but the officers in the field as well. Thank you.
Next speaker.
So I just want to clarify from something prior. I applaud what the city's done on the homeless issue 100%. I applaud what's going on with sober living 100%. And I trust this council. So if you think we need something, I think we need it. And personally, from what I've seen the police department doing, it's almost like they've had to become social workers and, I mean, I don't, it's beyond, beyond. And what I do not understand was why in the middle of a heroin epidemic and prison realignment, you would disband the narcotics division. Now, not you, I meant Jim and Steve. Why would you do that? So you know how I'm out there and people give me things? I've told you this story before. Someone handed me a notebook. It was full of heroin, how to get the heroin, what to do, what to do. So because we didn't have a narcotics division, this was 2014, I didn't know what to do. So I asked a couple of people and then I decided, well, Newport Beach has a really good narcotics division. So I took the notebook over to Newport Beach narcotics officers and they sat with us for an hour and they were thrilled to have this notebook. It was a gold mine of information, what taxis to call for black heroin, who to call for white heroin. But I couldn't take it to our Costa Mesa Police Department because I didn't trust them. I didn't know what was going on. Now I feel, I'm really happy that things are changing. I feel that it's kind of a new day. I think, I feel like things are going to get straightened out. And as far as I'm concerned, you should give these guys whatever they want because I cannot believe what they're dealing with out on the streets. It's beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So I believe in supplying people with whatever tools they need to do it. But can I just hand you guys my phone real quick so you guys can pass it along and look at it? May I, please? Or may the officer do it?
What is it you would like to show us?
It's a picture of a vehicle. Just if, can I just give it to him? He can give it to you.
You want to give it to us? But we don't want to be responsible if something happens to your phone.
It's only a phone.
Yeah, actually, he'll just walk through with it. There we go.
Don't go too fast. I really got to observe that. Okay, so that's a 2018 Tiffin. That's $350,000. And I'll tell you what, it's better than what they're looking at. So if you got that and you put a few radios in it, you can even repaint it black and white. It wouldn't cost 1.5. It doesn't go any faster. It has two bathrooms. Two. It's gorgeous. I just Googled my phone. It says that it'll cost between 200 and $800,000 to have a command. That's twice as much. I want my dog park, with all due respect. You can get whatever you want, but if you can save some money, I'll be willing to help. My brother's in communication. You can have his number. It won't be that much. I don't understand how these prices just balloon, especially since you're going to have to go out and get a loan or a grant or whatever you're going to have to do to get it. There's other ways of acquiring stuff that doesn't have to cost 1.5 million. City of Orange has a brand new Hummer 1. It's a military Hummer. It's gorgeous. They take it out four times a year. It's sitting at the city yard. They need it. I get it. Give it to them. But can we at least look at other options so we're not in it for 1.5? We can do it for 600 and you'll have two bathrooms and it'll be the best looking one around. I guarantee you that. Guaranteed. So please, just look outside the box, give them what they need because I believe in them and I respect them and I call you guys a lot too, so I apologize. But just, can we just look at this before we go out and just dump another 1.5? Please? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will close public comment. Counsel, is there a motion? Councilmember Marr.
I'll move to approve the item as recommended with the exception of number three. Authorize the city manager to enter into a master financing agreement for a principal amount not to exceed 1.5 million for the purchase of the mobile command vehicle, full stop.
Okay, Councilmember Reynolds.
Oh, sorry.
Did you second?
No.
Did you want to speak to the motion?
I was going, no.
Okay. So, okay, I'll second. Thank you. Okay. And I support the motion. I, I'm glad that we were able to kind of nail down what are the issues and what was needed. And I think what's important for the public to understand, the mobile command vehicle, it's like having a police station and a fire station all in one, mobile in the community. So it's not just a motor home with bathrooms. It's a lot more extensive in terms of technology and the equipment that's contained in there. It's so that you, in case you don't have ability to be at the police station, that you can be out in the field and to have all of the same equipment and resources available to you in terms of technology out in, on the vehicle. So it's a little more than what was described. And I also, I hope that what we can see as we move into, I know we're already, we have just finished the budgeting and now we're finalizing this year's budget with this motion tonight. But I hope that as we move into the next budget phase, which is already going to start in January, that we continue to work collaboratively and that if there's a list of things that are needed, that we get that, you know, in advance. I do recall from last week's meeting that there was $1.8 million left in the police department budget at the end of this fiscal year. So, you know, spend the money. And I guess that's pretty much all I have to say. But we support you. We want to make sure that our police officers have the equipment that they need so that they can protect the community, they can protect themselves, and we can provide good service in our community. And I know that you know that and I appreciate your, I appreciate also your leadership as you are in the interim right now. So thank you so much for transitioning in quickly and seamlessly. Appreciate that. Councilmember Reynolds.
Can I just, excuse the motion real quick?
Oh, I thought you were expecting. Okay. Wait, hold on one second. Marr, Councilmember Marr, will you ask for the floor?
I still have, the mic's still on.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to say thank you. This process was moved up. This is kind of a weird thing we're doing, right? By having this meeting, I almost said December because I keep thinking it's December already, but having this meeting in November and then coming back to both start the budget cycle for next year and then also look at our mid-year. I do want to say, you know, this is looking out several years in advance, which means we're really committing ourselves for future budget cycles to already funds having been allocated. And that's, you know, that's something we as a council need to continue to take into consideration, right? We've already, we're planning for next year's money and the year after. And so, you know, I'm going to beat the drum, I keep beating, but, you know, we need to be very cognizant of how to bring in additional revenues and in order to balance the budget for years moving forward. And then just on the mobile command vehicle, I, again, have said this from the dais many times, but I live in fear of the next emergency happening in our city, right? Of an earthquake, of a natural disaster, of something happening in one of our schools. And so I think the ability to deploy and have folks onsite for an extended period of time in the event that you have some kind of a mass casualty, some kind of an incident that frankly will happen at some point, is just of critical importance. And all of the other cities around us have that capability and the fact that we do not is something that I think is a little bit scary. So I'm anxious to get the mobile command vehicle going and having that as a resource in our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Okay, just want to make sure, I think I misunderstood the original motion. So the motion is to approve all of the items but just not pursue grant funding and go ahead and go straight to the financing. Okay. Yes, thank you. And I'll just say thanks for all of your work on this in continuing to sort of unravel our previous budget process and build a more systematic one that helps us more closely monitor spending. So thank you for all your work.
Mayor Pro Tim Stevens.
So I made some of these comments just last week at the study session, but I think our ratings are a little higher for a regular city council meeting. I'm not sure if that's true, but they're still probably on the Arbitron index, probably pretty low, but whatever. Anyhow, so I support the motion. I think it's great. I appreciate all the work that the finance department, in particular Kelly Telford did, also the FIPAC that looked into this and passed on these recommendations. And that the council did to, I thought it was a very wise decision to have this meeting in November, the meeting we had, the study session, and then bring these items forward and defer them to do some additional analysis. Thank you, Captain Glass, for stepping in and being so collaborative. I think, you know, we have some lessons to be learned. We shouldn't ever in the future have a situation where we have so many pent-up needs that we're asking for in one budgetary cycle. It creates some stress and challenges. We shouldn't have a situation where at the same time we have these pent-up needs, we don't spend 1.8 million in the prior year's budget. Those are lessons that we can learn going forward and we can be better about collaborating between the different departments and our new, relatively new, finance director. Also, I appreciate that you've looked at different sources. You've looked at, as we talked about earlier, the asset forfeiture fund for the CCTV units. You've looked at AB 109 and other grant funding. We've explored grant funding and financing the mobile command unit. That's something that wasn't addressed in the last budgetary cycle, but it was creative on the part of finance and the police department to do that and think of these solutions. It's the most important department in the city for our public safety, but it's It's the most important department in the city for our public safety, but it's not the only department in the city. And every single department contributes to our public safety, working together. You know, Raj's department, of course, Finance, working together. We make a better community and a safer community for our residents. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Chavez.
Mayor Pro Tim Stevens took most of my talking points, so we're in a good thing here today. I just want to reiterate, this is commitment to public safety we're doing today. And it's also a good time to highlight a few things that Mayor Pro Tim just said. You know, we had a lot of things that were in the boiler that we needed addressed that weren't being addressed in the past. And we have to, going forward, be systematic and have a system where we can see what our needs are, so we can address them at an adequate time. Very pleased we were able to pull this off in a three-year cycle. Very happy to see our Police Department find ways to use money to halve over the 1.8 million to fit some other needs. But I do want to stress that there's some way we can, for both Fire and Police and all departments, have a way to see what our needs are upcoming, so you can properly allocate that going forward. That'd be a lot cleaner, a lot smoother for everyone. And again, our main thing here in council, being sure everyone's safe in Costa Mesa. And that's through our Police and Fire Department, that's through first responders, and I'm very happy to vote for this motion, because it's showing our commitment and dedication to our public safety for our citizens.
Okay, call for the question.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Now we will move to new business, item number two.
Thank you. This is the mayor's appointment to the Planning Commission at-large seat, and I will do this report. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, for your consideration, is the mayor's appointment to the Planning Commission. This is the at-large seat, term expiring January 2021. Following are the names of the applicants. Pantera Watts, Sarah Fay, Adam McGary, Andrew Gallagher, Daniel Morgan, Liz Wenger, Autumn Herzer, Mark Perkins, and Christina Mayer. Following public comments, the mayor shall make the motion for the nomination, which requires approval and majority vote of the city council. This concludes the staff report. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Seeing no questions in the queue, we'll move to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Please come to one of the two podiums.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Mark Perkins, and I'm a professor of biology at Orange Coast College. I'm one of the applicants for the open seat on the Planning Commission. Costa Mesa's proposed RENA numbers mean that we have to grow. I would like to see the city grow sustainably and equitably, building for a variety of life stages and life situations, for everyone from young people, like my students, just leaving home, to seniors on limited incomes. Active transportation and transit, along with mixed-use development, have the potential to mitigate the effects of additional housing on traffic and parking. If we can promote growth in such a way that residents can meet many of their daily needs with an easy walk, bike, or transit ride, we can eliminate many vehicle trips, reduce our community's impact on climate change, and improve the health and vitality of our community. We can look to others for inspiration, but I think Costa Mesa has the potential to lead the way in urban planning, to be the city that people want to move to, because we figured out how to mix affordable housing with commercial and industrial development in a manner that provides jobs, homes, and quality of life. Thank you for considering my application tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Green, are you, you didn't, okay. Okay. You're going to have to switch, sorry. One second. You got it? Okay, thanks.
Members of the city council, you're looking at a person who has been actively involved with Costa Mesa events in this room since the '70s. Some of you weren't even born yet. The other two of you were in preschool or grammar school.
I wasn't.
I have attended.
Not yet.
I have attended Planning Commission meetings, and I have spoken at Planning Commission meetings. And historically, the Planning Commissioners were focused on buildings. And I would like to suggest a change in the profile. I think it's high time to look to the future and to focus on the residents of this city. After having read all of the applications for this Planning Commission seat online, I have this to say. Costa Mesa needs a fresh outlook toward a strong towns' profile. Strong towns are popping up nationwide. Enough with the real estate business and the developers. Our city needs to advocate for infrastructure and land-use development that focus on active transportation. Costa Masons need a walkable and a bikeable city. Mark Perkins walks the walk, oops, I mean, bikes the bike, and talks the talk, and puts his time and energy toward a user-friendly, strong town. The city needs to look to the future. Strong towns are our future. Please vote for Mark Perkins for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mike Lingel. I also support Mark Perkins to be appointed to the Planning Commission. Mark's shown a strong involvement in our community leadership roles in the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets, of which I'm also a part, OCC clubs that are focused on active transportation, such as Bike Yard, Food Riders, and the Merrick Way Demonstration Event, where he was the OCC liaison to the project. We've got a problem coming down the hill towards Costa Mesa, a tentative RENA allocation of almost 12,000 units of housing. There are a lot of people who are very worried about how we can accommodate that in what they think of as a built-out city, because they fear the traffic impacts, the demand for parking, et cetera, will choke our city. I think it's time for a fresh set of eyes who will look at this from a different perspective and not focus on large-scale developments concentrated in small areas of the city that result in gigantic increases in density, but rather think about incremental development throughout the city, connection to businesses that are also scattered throughout the city, and using active transportation and public transportation as ways to get around so that people don't have to choose a car because they have no alternative. And I think Mark has that vision. So I encourage you to choose Mark. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Ralph Toboda. The prior two speakers, I jotted some things down, but they said it a lot better than I'm going to say it. But I've known Mark for about four years. I met him first when he was advocating for improved biking and walking routes and trails in Costa Mesa. He's almost a 20-year resident in Costa Mesa. I believe his resume shows he's self-motivated, open to collaboration, new ideas, and very proactive. I think would be an asset to the Planning Commission and help the Planning Commission and the city deal with its RENA requirements. He will be an advocate for solutions that promote active transportation, which will help alleviate or at least not increase Costa Mesa's traffic and parking problems. As his resume reflects, he is a very, very active and proactive professor at OCC, and I believe he will be the same as a member of the Planning Commission. Appreciate your support for Mark Perkins. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be our last speaker.
It's really fun to get up and say, I totally agree with all the prior speakers, 100%. I'd also like to say that the Planning Commission is really important. That's what I learned, watching all of this nonsense the last 10 years unfold. It shouldn't be a political payback or cronyism. It should be the best qualified person for the position. My favorite was Jeff Matthews, who didn't even live in Costa Mesa. He was living in El Toro. There were lots of people that knew about it, and he stayed on the Planning Commission for four more years. How did that happen? And he did whatever the prior majority council told him to do. I think that is dishonest. I think it's corrupt. And I just hope that the new Planning Commissioner, who is an independent thinker, will think for themselves, won't get told what to do, and please read the consent calendar. The present Planning Commissioners do not read the consent calendar. They do not read what Willa has slipped through. They don't even pay attention. I think it's a major mistake, considering what's going on in our city, and I'm sure Mark Perkins wouldn't do that. I think he'll read the consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. Counsel? Oh, I guess I'm the one. Okay, so I actually spoke to, tried to speak to every single one of the applicants. I couldn't get ahold of all of them, but, and we had some really good applicants. I think there were two that were particularly qualified for the position. And so I narrowed it down to those two in terms of who I was going to consider. And I had a very lengthy call today with Mr. Perkins, and we talked about a lot of issues. And so one of my goals as a mayor is to diversify our representation on our committees and on our commissions in terms of neighborhoods, in terms of cultural background, in terms of age, in terms of professional experience. And so there, I think we do need some representation from the neighborhood that Mr. Perkins lives in. And I also felt that he kind of has the experience to have a lens from which to review and evaluate applications at the planning level that take into consideration issues that are really important to me. Climate action. He's a biology professor. It's probably a good idea. He's interested in climate action. Housing, it's very important to us right now. And how do we, how do we meet the housing needs while still retaining the quality character of our single-family neighborhoods? I think that's important to me. I think it's important to our community, and I think we can do both. Active transportation, I initiated the Walkability/Bikeability Committee, and of which many members are sitting in the audience, so thank you for being here. And active transportation is very important, I think, to our, to me, to our council. It's one of our priorities. Obviously, we know it's important to Councilmember Reynolds, who's biking everywhere now. But it's also part of, I think, the future. A more bikeable/walkable community is really critical to our future, and I think that there's certainly ample evidence that Mr. Perkins has a goal towards that end as well. So I'll be nominating Mark Perkins for the Planning Commission chair position. Oh, yeah. Make a motion. I'm going to tell myself what to do now. Okay, Councilmember Marr, do you want to speak to the motion?
Sorry, I beat Reynolds to it. You can do it.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Somebody push the button.
I'll second.
Mayor Pro Tim Stevens.
I wish you my second to give it to Arliss.
Oh, well, she could speak to it. I mean, you already spoke to it, right?
Councilmember Marr, did you want to speak?
I think.
Your microphone's on.
Okay.
Yes, you're a wonderful choice. I'm excited to have you on the Planning Commission. Thank you for your service to the community.
Okay, Councilmember Chavez.
I'll let Mayor Pro Tim Stevens go next.
No, just go ahead. Your microphone's on.
I will say this. As a young person on the dais, I am looking forward to the future and seeing how housing's going to change, how we're changing transportation. The only way we're going to fit these numbers for RENA is if we finally change the way we look at traveling and the way we view our cities. If we put all these units in Costa Mesa, and everyone has a car, and everyone's household has three cars, we are going to be in gridlocked traffic forever. We have to look at ways to be alternative in traveling, maybe walking, maybe biking, maybe going on LimeScooters like they did on the weekend in Long Beach, which is pretty fun. We have to be creative, and planning no longer just means building houses or building complexes. It means looking at the way the city, as we function, and looking at how we're going to live in the future. So for that reason, I think Mr. Perkins is the best candidate for this position. Thank you for applying.
Mayor Pro Tim Stevens.
Yeah, congratulations. You know, I support the motion, so you're going to win. And not only because of that, but I think it's also interesting that you have a master's in biology, and you're replacing Carla Navarro-Woods. And she had a master's in biology. So we're having some continuity, and I hope that, you know, you do it just as well as she did in terms of reading and following up and going out and looking at the sites. She'd be a really good model for you to follow. And I also think that you have a unique credential in as much as the contact that you have with the students and the younger people in our community is a point of diversity that you can bring to the Planning Commission. And so I appreciate that. It's an important job, and I'm glad you stepped up to serve your community. Thank you.
Call for the question. Oh, well, you didn't have, you weren't in the queue. Okay, there you go.
Okay. I'll just want to add, I guess I'll echo everything I've heard already. I think it's a fantastic appointment, a fantastic addition to our Planning Commission. I think Councilmember Chavez mentioned this, and Mayor Foley, the need to start discussing transportation with housing, with planning, absolutely critical. I grew up in this city, and it's only this year that I've started trying to bike everywhere. And it's really remarkable how differently I experience the city now, and you really start to understand the impact of different design decisions or planning decisions like you don't experience when you're in a car. So I think that perspective you have of biking around the city all the time is going to be really, really valuable to our planning discussions. A Harvey Mudd graduate, we've got a very critical, creative thinker. My brother's also a Mudder. So really have a lot of faith in your ability to pick up quickly on the other aspects of the Planning Commission. So thrilled to have you. Congratulations.
Thank you. And then I assume, Ms. Farah Harrison, that we will make sure that he has the information about the league Planning Commission 101 seminar and training. Okay, great. Okay, call for the question.
Motion carries five zero.
Congratulations. Okay, now, our final item of business is the next item, number three.
Thank you. This is the Orange County Registrar of Voters Ballot Dropbox License Agreements and Vote Center Facility Use Agreements. And I'm going to go to a different podium here, so. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. For your consideration, tonight are the license agreements for ballot drop boxes on city property and facility use agreements. All right, but first, we have a newly released video from the Orange County Registrar of Voters on the Vote Center model.
The 2020 election is ushering in a new and exciting change for all of Orange County voting residents. We've always been a leader in election innovation, and now that same strength and legacy are coming to the election process with our new vote centers. At the Orange County Registrar of Voters, we pride ourselves on being at the forefront of election operations and are always looking for ways to improve and work more efficiently. This historic shift in voting from traditional polling places to vote centers will make it more convenient, more secure, and more accessible for all voters. As technology is constantly advancing and voter habits change, the traditional polling place model has fallen behind the needs of Orange County voters. We are now introducing vote centers to Orange County. This new way to vote means we are no longer restricted to voting on just one day. We take away the confusion of which polling place to cast your ballot, and we modernize, simplify, and increase security of the entire voting process. Vote centers usher in an incredible leap forward in how our elections are held. You will now be able to vote in person over an 11-day period in nearly 200 county-operated vote centers with highly-trained staff that can help you from registering to vote, casting your ballot, and everything in between. Gone are the days of your address determining where you vote or the need for most provisional ballots. Now you can choose to vote at any location convenient for you, walk in when you want and where you want. Voting in person at a vote center will be a similar experience to what you're used to, only with some exciting enhancements to make the process easier and more efficient, ensuring every vote is handled accurately and securely. Every voter will receive a ballot through the mail Every voter will receive a ballot through the mail prior to Election Day, but this isn't your only option to vote. When voting in person, a new electronic check-in process speeds up voting time, verifies your information, and provides real-time data to election staff so they can better assist you. Regardless of how you choose to vote in person, the procedures all remain the same. If you vote by mail, you can keep voting the same way you have in the past. Your ballot and process will look the same as before. If you prefer to drop off your vote-by-mail ballot, we now have brand-new ballot drop boxes located throughout Orange County. These new ballot drop boxes are easy to spot, convenient, and have enhanced security measures. Vote centers are staffed with friendly, professionally-trained agents who can assist you with all of your voter needs and offer more services than the traditional polling place. If it's your first time voting or you need general voter assistance, you can stop by any vote center for help. There, they can verify your vote-by-mail ballot has been received, generate a replacement ballot, or check your registration status. We are excited about this incredible new election process that makes voting more accessible, more secure, and simply easier. For more information, please visit ocvote.com.
That's great. Okay. We'll get into there. All right. Now, we'll go to the next one. Again, I'd just like to reiterate, voters can cast their ballot by mailing, drop it in any ballot drop box, or can still vote in person at any site throughout Orange County. Just so you know, the ballot drop boxes that were shown are required for every 15,000 registered voters.
Oh, wow.
The ROV is requesting two drop boxes on city property, one here at the Mesa Verde Branch Library, where that bench is, that would be removed, and the other one is here at T-Winkle Park.
Can you go back to the prior slides?
Yes.
Okay. Are we gonna put the bench somewhere else? Okay.
Yes, the, Mr. Seth Rahman, and Mr. Mejia, and Mr. Lindeman have checked out these locations and have agreed to the placement of these locations and any standing structures or things they'll work with replacing. All right, now, here's the location at T-Winkle Park. Okay. Then, along with this, the ROV will have seven vote centers here in Costa Mesa. One is an 11-day vote center here at City Hall, and then, there are four-day vote centers, one at Belerick Center, the Costa Mesa Senior Center, the Donald Dungen Library, Sophia University, Orange Coast College, and one location that's still to be determined. Staff recommendations are to approve the two license agreements for placement of ballot drop boxes at the Mesa Verde Library in T-Winkle Park, and approve the four vote center facility use agreements that are on city facilities, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreements. This concludes the staff report, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions we may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Put your name in the queue, please. Councilmember Reynolds.
Just had a question about that bench. Why, it seemed like there was plenty of room to put a ballot box around the corner from the bench. Why move the bench?
Can you put that slide back up?
Madam Mayor, the location was picked by the Register of Voters, and we just accommodated their request, and there is opportunity for a bench to be moved anyway, so...
Is there a plan to move the bench around the corner?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, the ROV has been doing extensive analysis on locations, and they did have another location, but it was too close to the street, and we thought it might create some traffic problems on Mesa Verde there, and so, this was the second location.
Okay. I have a question about the T-Winkle Park. Can you put that slide up? So, I happen to know that this location right here, it gets very dark right here. So, this is on the Presidio side of the park, right? Or is this on the Arlington side?
Madam Mayor, it's Arlington side.
Arlington side. Okay, okay, never mind. Okay, and then, my other question is that you said it was 15, we need one box per 15,000 voters?
Registered voters.
Okay, so, in last election, we had about, you know, over 55,000. I know that there's been more voters registered since then, so we should at minimum have three boxes, and then, probably by Election Day, we should have four boxes, so...
Yes. The ROV plans on having four locations in Costa Mesa, four drop boxes, but only two are on city property...
I see.
...which the agreements are for.
Okay.
And they're still working on the other two locations here in the city. They will be on private property, like, most likely, they're looking at high-traffic areas like the Target Shopping Center. There's a shopping center on the east side that they're looking at, too, and they're in negotiations right now with those property owners.
Okay, excellent. All right. We'll open this item up to public comment. Anybody wish to speak to this item, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, close the public comment. Council? Chavez?
Move the balance, please.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds?
Second.
And would you like to speak to the item?
Yes. Democracy matters, voting matters. Anything we can do to make it easier to vote is critical and important for democracy. You know, I know in my district, people love the fact that they can vote early at the senior center. People were happy to vote early in the weekend when they're free and not on a Tuesday when they worked. This is a great way to galvanize people who are working class, and I think it's amazing we're doing this.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Second.
Okay. Yes, I agree. Call for the question. Councilmember Stevens, or Mayor Pro...
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. And, additional Councilmember Committee reports, comments, and suggestions. Anyone please request in the queue. Seeing no one, oh, Councilmember Chavez. Thought we were gonna get out.
I apologize. I'll be really quick. I forgot to mention this during my opening comments. There were a numerous of large furniture items on Chalamar Street. If someone could go see if it can be picked up, it would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and go Bruins this weekend.